Started. Stand to the pledge of allegiance first. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Captain Demick? Here.
Here.
Here. William Lysat. He's here. The President, Mike. Can you say here? You Bill?
I can't hear but I'm here.
Okay. Stephen Moore?
Present.
Your Honor, it's here. Grace Sreen, here.
Present.
Okay, we'll start with visitor comments.
Whoa, that works. Whoa.
Good evening. As a parent, we ponder the question of how we can become an advocate for our children. I've never been to a school meeting before, let alone speak at one. But I felt the need to come tonight and voice my opinion. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent of a student athlete. Turf fields and Southern Lee High School District have been talked about for many, many years. So far, things have been all talk, no action. I'm here tonight to talk about the conditions of our fields at Southern Lee High. Being one of the wealthiest school districts in our area, it's very sad to go to schools like Northwestern, Northern Lee High, Quakertown, Catasauqua, Whitehall, and Palmerton, just to name a few. All of these schools have beautifully manicured stadium turf fields. They charge admission to get into games, which I'm sure helps offset the cost. Most of these stadiums have been sponsored by Lehigh Valley Hospitals, St. Luke's University Health Network, or predominant business in their community. I'm sure we would be able to offset some of the costs if we pursued a similar route. Also noteworthy is that we can run out the stadium for playoff games to accrue extra revenue. These fields not only are embarrassing, but they are very dangerous. I speak as a parent of a freshman who plays both field hockey and lacrosse. I have practiced with her several times over the summer on the fields and said to myself, if these conditions moving forward for the season, if these are the conditions, we are in big trouble. As summer progressed and the fall season came upon us, the field conditions worsened. The lack of rain this season did not help, but if we had turf fields, the weather conditions would not be an issue. The field hockey field is full of divots, holes, especially around the circle where scoring happens. It's one big dust field. Taking shots on goal has become very dangerous as dust flies up into the girls' faces. Some of our athletes have actually twisted ankles this season already due to holes in the field. The lacrosse practice field is literally called the sloped field. The name alone gives you an idea of its conditions. There's no reason our school district should not have turf fields. We pay plenty of taxes, and I personally would not mind if there was a slight increase if it meant our district would be spared the embarrassment, but more importantly, prevent unnecessary injuries to our student athletes. The embarrassment of when teams come to play at our school fields mentioned is horrifying. I have often heard parents in the bleachers and spectators commenting about the conditions of our fields. The three little benches we have at the field hockey field for spectators is laughable. The main concern of these student athletes is the dangerous conditions. Turf fields could act as a multipurpose practice games for football, lacrosse, soccer, and field hockey, and I'm sure other sports. We could also run out the turf fields for playoffs and other events to generate extra revenue. While artificial turf has become a hotly debated topic, it does offer some undeniable benefits for facility owners, maintenance staff, and players alike. A few benefits are as follows: no pesky maintenance, such as mowing, fertilizing, or aerating; water conservation, no watering so you can save millions of gallons of water per year; it has a good ROI, return on investment; a higher initial cost at first but could pay itself back in as little as five years due to limited maintenance costs. You would have less health-related issues surrounding fertilization of pesticides.
Excuse me, you're tying this up.
Is that it?
Yep.
I think I have to do my best one.
Thank you.
Okay, the refs came to our school and they said our district had the worst field hockey field they've ever seen.
I just want to note that Mr. Demick came in as the meeting was started. And our field hockey team did do a very good job this afternoon.
Good evening. My name is Tricia Priski, and I'm the president of the Southern Lee High Football Booster Club. I am also the parent of two children, one being an eighth grader who is currently playing football, and a daughter who currently plays soccer. I am here this evening to first thank you for all your time and dedication that go into your role as school board members. I understand this is no easy job, but the commitment you have all made with promising to do what is best for our community, and most importantly, our children, is truly appreciated. For the past several months, I know that you have been hearing all the many reasons on why approving the new stadium project will benefit all of our children, the staff that use it, as well as benefiting the community and other school organizations that visit it. I am not here to repeat those important safety and modernization reasons, or the risk of injuries associated with continuing to use our current field. You already are aware of all those reasons. Rather, I want to simply recapture for you the most beautiful night we experienced this past Friday evening at our stadium. Not only was it our first varsity home game, but we also celebrated our youth night, welcoming close to 200 youth cheerleaders and football players. These young Spartans were welcomed onto the football field and cheered alongside our high school cheerleaders as we brought home a huge win over Banger. In my opinion, the most special and most magical part of the evening was when we had the Sassy Massey Foundation and our halftime show with a special tribute to all the heroes who have either lost their battle or continue to fight from pediatric cancer. I was a volunteer for the pediatric cancer tribute this past Friday, and one of my jobs was to give out the yellow glow sticks prior to halftime to the visiting side that would be used for the tribute. When distributing the glow sticks to the visitor's side, I was saddened to see that many of our very own Southern Lee High fans were actually sitting on the away side, since there wasn't enough room on the home side for our fans to be together. I also overheard many of the visiting side fans cracking jokes about our scoreboard and some other outdated features. Now, with all that said, this past Friday evening was a great example of what our school stadium means to our entire Southern Lee High community. It is a place to come together, to cheer on our student athletes, to watch and listen to the wonderful talent of our band members, to spotlight important tributes that bring our community together. Our children deserve this new and updated stadium. They deserve to overhear the visiting sides being in awe of how updated and safe our facilities are. Please vote yes to do what is right for our children. Vote yes to moving forward on our stadium project. The new stadium that will safely continue to house all the special and memorable moments our children and community deserve. Thank you.
Thanks for having me. So I frequently tell my children that hard work beats talent when talent doesn't work hard. And in Southern Lee High School District, we have exactly that: student athletes that both are talented and work extremely hard. These athletes are recognized by their peers throughout the surrounding school districts, areas, and regional leagues for their superior play. In fact, this weekend, one of even our athletes who's with us tonight was recognized on ESPN's Top Plays of the Week. But their superior play is often overshadowed by the lackluster facilities that our school district has in order to showcase this talent. Students from other districts are apprehensive to play here, to run on our track and play on our fields, for fear of injury resulting from poor field and track conditions. While we're one of the most affluent districts in the area, we are far behind our less affluent neighbors. Our swimmers and our baseball players, they have home meets and matches at rental sites due to our lack of facilities. Our field hockey team, which is one of the most successful teams that we have year after year, continues to play on grass, which is almost unheard of for a team of our caliber, a school of our size, and to say well below the baseline field standards of that sport. That team has had to practice for districts and state playoff games at other facilities that are turf-based in order to just maintain a competitive game, as turf-based teams have a well-documented competitive advantage. Our football team has had to play on our youth field. They've had to go to Quakertown for varsity games due to unplayable field conditions. High caliber athletes have left this district due to the perceived lack of support and the progressive deterioration of its sporting facilities, many of which are now unfortunately past the point of repair and are at end of life. These athletes have relocated to district where their talent is showcased weekly, and their student athletes are proud of the facilities that they play in. The scoreboard is not visible during the daytime games here, and at nighttime, it's foggy at best. And up until recently, our football field was painted by the Booster Club and its volunteers in order to make it more aesthetically pleasing and to promote team spirit. This field shows obvious signs of disease now again, as it has in years past, and to say that this district is due to renovation of its sporting facilities is an understatement, and it's absolutely long overdue. Please vote yes.
Good evening. I join you tonight as a board member of the Southern Lee High Youth Football Association and a mom of two student athlete sons. This past week, my family collectively spent 14 hours on the football field in addition to our jobs and school. I have scrubbed and washed a countless number of grass stains out of my son's uniforms and have often shared in the job of painting and preparing the field of youth games at Living Memorial. In other words, I do understand the maintenance that goes into football season and game day preparation, and the purchase of a new turf is a noteworthy investment for the Southern Lee High School District. This is also my 21st year as a public educator, and I have been to a countless number of football games at various fields across four counties, and I assure you that our stadium, bleachers, and scoreboard are absolutely inferior to many districts with a lower tax base, and this is unacceptable. For instance, this last weekend, SLIFIA traveled to the pirate ship at Palisades, and their turf and scoreboard are sponsored by Coordinated Health, now Lehigh Valley Health Network, while their fan base and football records do not match our successes. Our scoreboard is illegible, our field has divots that can roll an ankle, and our bleachers cannot hold our impressive audience. While I do not keep track of the profit that we make at home games, I can see with my naked eye that our football team consistently brings in an energetic crowd which has outgrown our stands, whether it be the parents of the band, cheerleaders, football players, or the huge student section. My children love football, and the stadium is their home away from home. Please improve the same space that welcomes thousands of visitors each sports season. Come spring, my middle school son will play lacrosse on the same field, and this means even more hours spent and yet another team and fan base to benefit from your investment. I close tonight with a familiar cheer that you may recognize if you're a true Spartan fan on weekends. We are Spartans, couldn't be prouder. If you can't hear us, then yell a little louder. I promise you that there will be a strong return on your investment with the purchase of a new turf field. Spartan pride will only be stronger and louder with a new turf field to match the strength and grit shown by our athletes at each game. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Hello, Southern Lee High School Board members. My name is Jack Ingles, and I'm currently an 11th grade student here at Southern Lee High School. I am part of the track and football teams at the high school, and I am here tonight to speak on behalf of all of our athletes that use our school's stadium. As a track athlete, I would first like to bring to light some of the safety hazards the condition of our track is currently in. On the long jump runway, for example, as I'm a long jump athlete, prior to the board, the track is peeling up and bubbling. While at an invitational this past year, a similar issue was present, and I witnessed an athlete tear this up, slide into the pit on the concrete underneath, and exit the meat injured. His invite was cut short because something similar and something similar could happen here. Secondly, the bubbles are intolerable. This past year, I witnessed three rolled angles on the bubbles peeking up from the track. There's only so much that we can do in the beginning of the year to prevent these bubbles, and a new track with upgrade to this facility would prevent this issue. Lastly, as a Southern Lee High football player, something I want to say and something that I would like to add to something that was said earlier was the stands. My family and friends, who account for more than 10 people at these games, have no room on our home bleachers. They are forced to sit on the opponent's sideline, holding back their cheers for what the surrounding fans would react. Between the student section and the band, there is only one-third of the home section available for fans to sit in. And not only does this fill up quickly around 6 o'clock, anyone that gets there around 6:45 must sit on this opponent's section. So I would just like to preach that a new facility would not only upgrade the facilities for our athletes, but also for the fans and parents of our athletes. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. My name's Colleen Hutter. I've been a resident in the school district for 19 years and been hearing talk about turf for all of them. I currently have two children in Southern Lee High Schools, a freshman at the high school and a seventh grader at the middle school, and I'd always thought we'd have turf by now. I'm here to advocate for the turf field, the synthetic track, the bleachers, and the lighting as a benefit to not just our student athletes, but to the community as a whole, as other people have talked about. In addition to the focus on academics, both of my children have played a variety of sports over the years, including soccer and lacrosse. Through these teams, we've had the opportunity to play many times on turf, which has aided their growth and development as athletes. We've been on turf fields all over Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland, and Delaware, including nearby facilities at Nazareth, both their middle school and their high school turf field, Parkland and Palisades, to name a few of the local school districts where our Southern Lee High Middle School and High School teams play, both football, field hockey, soccer, and lacrosse. As a parent, I've also attended many of the events in these same stadiums to watch my children, as well as travel to different locations to watch our Southern Lee High teams play, just like the football game in Quakertown a couple weeks ago. Southern Lee High stadiums, as we've talked about earlier, has a lot of room for improvement, not just for our athletes, but for our band as well as our spectators. I'd like to point out a few of the advantages of the three stadium project proposals that are up for a vote tonight. I won't cover safety, somebody already covered that, but that turf fields and synthetic tracks with lights are always available regardless of the weather condition. We don't have to cancel practice for fear of the rain and what that might do to the grass. We don't have to relocate games to other facilities because our sod has failed us. Some of our sports, especially field hockey, play absolutely differently on turf. Our teams are often at a disadvantage due to the grass fields, and as covered earlier, we've had to spend money to rent fields elsewhere to prepare for state playoff season. I also understand that this project would enable a few things that benefit more than just the athletes themselves. The new stands would have an additional capacity, as people have talked about earlier. Anyone who's gone to a Friday night game has trouble finding a seat. And finally, the reconfiguration of the field would allow Southern Lee High to host many or most of the postseason playoff events that we've not been able to in the past. In summary, it's time to bring Southern Lee High into the 21st century. Our student athletes deserve a turf field and an upgraded track. Our band and the community at large deserve the upgraded stadium facilities. So beyond just a simple majority voting yes for this project, I'd ask that this board come together and show how our community can come together and vote 9-0 in favor of the upgrades across the board. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Adrian Sirfas. I'm an alumni, one of the high school science teachers, a parent of three current Southern Lee High students, and the varsity field hockey coach. It is in this last capacity that I wish to speak today in regards to the importance of voting yes for the turf facility and all the amenities that come with it. As the field hockey coach for the last 20 years, it has been increasingly evident the importance of turf for the competitive success of the field hockey program. In the past, when the field hockey team entered into playoffs, we played the Colonial League playoffs, district playoffs, and state playoffs on turf. This remains true today. However, as more Colonial League teams have turf now, more often than not, we are playing not only playoff games on turf, but regular season games as well. The game of field hockey is vastly different depending upon the surface it is played. Having played, me, myself, having played on the current field that my team now plays on, and then playing on turf in college, there is a completely different skill set that must be mastered in order to play on the two different surfaces. Everything, from how the stick is held to receive the ball, to the various ways to push, hit, chip, and sweep the ball, change depending upon the surface. With the ability to play on turf every day, it will allow the field hockey team the advantage that many of the schools we play against currently have. By voting yes to the turf facility, it will allow the much-needed opportunity for the field hockey team to learn these much-needed skills early in the season rather than during playoffs, when we should be preparing for our opponent, rather than teaching individual skills necessary for a new surface. Southern Lee High is an excellent school district with administrators, teachers, support staff, secretaries, and custodians, all working hard for our students' academic success. It is time that our athletic facilities are brought up to the same standard of excellence that has become synonymous with the excellent education that Southern Lee High provides and our community so richly deserves. Thank you.
Good evening. Whether you like it or not, a centerpiece of any school district is its stadium. It's a point of pride, a focal point, and a sharply ingrained image in the mind of every student who passes through the school. A school stadium is for the kids, for the community, and for families. It plays host to athletes of all sports and ages. It welcomes neighboring communities, their athletes, their families. The sounds of the band echo off its walls and land on the ears of proud parents. Friday night lights shine bright and bring students together, a safe, fun, and positive environment providing teens with a place. Midweek soccer, field hockey, and lacrosse games under the lights garner excitement and amity. Graduates march in one last time to celebrate with their classmates and teachers and families before tossing their caps to the sky and entering the world, hopefully with fond memories of a high school that so shaped the course of their life. And the stadium, like it or not, is part of those memories. This quaint image that I just painted does not describe the stadium we currently have at Southern Lee High, and it could, it should. What we currently have is the worst in the Colonial Schuylkill League. As a fan who has spent time in every single stadium in the league, I can say that with total confidence. The away side at our stadium is safer and more comfortable than the home side. The bleachers are steep and treacherous without railings to support our older fans. The student section spills out into the fan area, blocking the view of those who cannot stand for an entire game. The section dedicated to the band is not enough. The middle section for the community is not enough. The section for those with disabilities is needlessly isolating. It shakes when things get exciting. We are one of the few schools without a turf field. A turf field has an even playing surface, reducing the risk of injury. Weather has less of an impact on events planned on a turf field. A turf field is easier to maintain. We don't have to spend money needlessly to run out and travel to a turf field when our grass is diseased and dies as in 2019. All teams can participate on a turf field, not just football. Frankly, I think we should have a couple turf fields, but that's for another meeting. Have you ever seen a field hockey game on turf? It's beautiful, and did you know that our field hockey team is a state contender almost every year lately? Aren't those athletes deserving of a state-of-the-art playing surface that would enhance their game tremendously? We owe it to current and future Spartans. It's time for Southern Lee High to build the facilities that our athletes, coaches, and school community deserve. We should walk into event at our stadium with pride, not embarrassment. We should be able to read the scoreboard on a sunny day. Southern Lee High has so much to offer kids: a first-rate staff, innovative curriculum, supportive community, academic excellence, and opportunity. What our district lacks and has ignored for far too long is actually a huge part of what makes this school great. A massive reason for school pride and camaraderie is its stadium. It has been neglected for far too long, and our kids deserve better. Our community deserves better. The stadium project needs to proceed, and as a school board and community, we need to do everything we can to make it happen for our kids. Thank you.
Dr. Mann has some updates.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan Artis. Two very quick updates. First, from the facility point of view, we do have on our agenda tonight the opportunity to approve the renovation to the stadium, and I do want to thank the Facility Committee for all their work. It's a very, very excellent design, and I'm just grateful for all the effort that has gone into it. I do want to add that unlike many stadiums, Southern Lee High will have constructed into this stadium, down at the one end, a bocce ball court. Bocce ball is something that is a very popular thing that the community will be able to use, but also it will expand access to our stadium to a set of athletes that have never had the opportunity to participate before. So that's an added feature that I think will be very well-used and hopefully something that is expansive to include more students than have been included before. I also want to note that later on this month, our Facility Committee will be interviewing engineers, engineers of record, in order to begin the process of doing some major maintenance projects with the roofs and the HVAC that we've been discussing for some time. So before I go on to the PCCD, perhaps I should pause to see if any members of the Facility Committee may have a thought that I've overlooked or as we head into this.
I just wanted to communicate to the community and thank you for all the support today.
Dr. Wayack speaking to the microphone. We have improved system.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Great. I just want to thank all the community members that are here today. I really want to publicly thank Dr. Mann, Mike, our Facilities Coordinator, and Lou as well, and all the members, Steve, as well as Bill on the Facilities Committee. So I just want to communicate to the community that our current home bleachers, I believe we can see 1,100, and in the current plan, I believe it's 1,771. So that is an improvement of over 600. So that's in the current plan. The synthetic turf is a very high-quality product by Shaw. Shaw is, I think, the largest carpet manufacturer in the country. They're owned by Berkshire Hathaway, so they're a very high-quality product. The product that we had chosen is called Legion NXT. It's one of their newest products. Has a 20-millimeter pad underneath it as well, which will help, especially for football. It's a monofilament, which I believe works best for really a multipurpose use, and especially for field hockey. So it's really a nice, a nice quality product. One of the reasons why we had chosen this product and Shaw is that, as you're aware, we believe there's five different lines that will need to go on the field. Oftentimes, when other products are placed, those lines are actually placed, they're actually cut, the turf itself is cut, and those lines are placed on-site. Shaw has its own manufacturing facility that allows this to be done in-house at the manufacturing facility, so less cutting that's going to be necessary upon installation, and we believe that that will hopefully cause less... We need one. We've needed one a while. I want to thank the legwork that went into some of the people the folks did who aren't sitting here tonight, because this all started like two years ago, when the old board took a vote and said, "Yeah, we want to get started on that permitting." And without the efforts of those administrators, for some of whom are sitting in this room, some of whom are not, for over two years, we wouldn't be ready to build this thing and play on it in the fall. So thank you to the current Committee, thank you to the folks who went before, and thanks to the new Administration for bridging that gap so nicely and keeping the work going. Yeah, I can't wait. It's about time we had turf.
Can I just ask a couple of questions, just so I understand? So the entire increase of seating is going to be on the home side, or is that encompass both sides?
No, so the visitor's side bleachers are not being touched. So the current plan, so that's our rate-limiting step.
I just want to make sure I understood.
Yep.
Okay.
It's just the home bleachers.
No, that's fine. I mean, certainly, we've been talking about this for a long time, and I agree. I mean, I've been to other fields as well. The track is clearly not in good shape at all, so that's not an issue. I just had a question, though, because a lot of the sports that we're talking about play at the same time with respect to seasons. So, I mean, do we have a clear usage plan, or would there be a way? Because I know right now, they don't all practice, and I apologize, because I don't have students that participate in any of the sports that would be involved, except for marching band, if we're going to count. But, um, so, which, we know where they'll practice probably, but, um, do they, they currently practice, I believe, on different fields? I know lacrosse certainly does in the spring. But I believe field hockey is usually practicing closer to the 309 entrance to the high school. So how are we going to accommodate teams that normally all practice after school on the same field for practice or games? You know, I just, have we thought that through? Because it is all the same season. Because I know we didn't have the money for the additional field, because we all, initially, we were talking about the second field also being changed to a turf format, but the money, unfortunately, was an issue.
Right. Dr. Serene, what I'll tell you is that the field will be in high demand.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure that that's realistic, because...
And coaches will be advocating, I see one back there, I know for sure, to use it, or two, two or three, right?
Because I mean, are we going to stagger practice?
What I'll also tell you is that this field is a field for all of our athletes. It's not a single team. And so we will do everything possible to make sure that we have an equitable utilization of this field, and we'll be listening to all voices, and I'll say it publicly, and that will be the case, for the use of this field, which will be for all of our teams. And again, people will advocate, and they'll say, "Well, I should have had this or that." But in the end, this is for all of our teams and all of our sports.
And then my other question was lighting. I thought that we weren't sure about, I mean, was that the other field that we weren't sure that we could afford the lighting? We're going to definitely do lighting for this field, correct?
We are definitely doing lighting in this one. And one of the things, we really must do the lighting, because if we were not to do it, then when these lights fail, which wouldn't be long, we'd have to excavate under the track, under the track, which would be problematic.
I remember that now. Thank you.
Mr. Mann? I'd just like to comment on the amount of work that was done in the Facilities Committee and the Administration, in particular, on the goal to have multiple sports and availability to this turf and track. We all felt that this was critical, so that we have the opportunity to be able to play various sports, not just one, on it. And that includes soccer, and its proper dimensions for play at the high school level, as well as track, lacrosse, field hockey. So everything will be there that makes sense and provide maximum utilization as well as participation in it. So that was a critical goal of ours.
That's MJ. Bill, she's calling you back.
Oh, is he here?
Yes, that's right.
Bill, yeah.
Thank you.
I apologize. I apologize for interrupting. I guess I have one question regarding handicap accessibility in the stands. I know that was an issue that had come before us from a few folks in the public, and what is being done to improve accessibility for visitors?
Right. And I know that it was, if anyone has any other answers, but I know that one of the core, critical components of this was ADA accessibility. We spoke at great length as to how, you know, with respect to length of ramps and seating areas and all that. So it was a core part of the conversation, and we certainly will be ADA compliant. Our expectation is that it will be very welcoming to all of our community members who would like to come and observe the games.
Yeah, and...
Is it supposed to be that?
Yes, the...
Is it a trap?
Yeah. Our expectation is that, should we approve this tonight, construction will begin immediately following the conclusion of this fall season, and then we'll hope for good weather over the winter, with the expectation that come August next year, this will be ready. So our spring sports will be on the road this year. And I know Mr. Zimmerman, who I see back there, has already made arrangements for our teams to be practicing in various places and playing in other places as well.
Yeah, so, Mike, I would add, and apologize for being a little bit late, but I had a memorial golf tournament that I played in for Special Olympics, and it was important I'd be there, too. I heard the visitor comments and couldn't agree more. Thank you for all the comments that you spoke to. And in regards to the handicap seating, that was of particular interest to me. Having stood on the platform, and if you are in a wheelchair, it's not a great experience. And I've been there with people that are wheelchair-bound. You're apart from your family, or your family is standing. These stands will be very similar to what you see in other facilities, where the areas for someone that is in a wheelchair, it's within the stands. So you can sit with your family, your family around you, and enjoy whatever event is taking place. Sporting, or as I heard someone mention, I hope it's the case, graduation in the future being held in this facility. So the idea of being inclusive, and also the idea of the bocce court that you brought to us, and being able to bring athletes of all shapes, sizes, capabilities, abilities into this facility, it's turned into something even better than I think any of us could have imagined by a great group of people coming together and listening to the community and listening to other ideas. And it's, you know, it will be drastically better than what we have. And who knows what the future holds as far as even being to add to it and add to these facilities around our schools in the future through other investment. And it very much is an investment in our student athletes. And they are students first and foremost. And I would hazard to guess, if we looked at the GPA across these teams, it's probably higher on average than the rest of the student body in many cases. And it, you know, I think the individuals that also, in the future, need something is the auditorium. And those individuals also perform very well in spite of how stretched they are, because they're great managers of their time. And they invest in it. They learn a lot in those investments that they give, and I think this is a great way to give back to them and to the community.
And then I do have a second, very brief part of my superintendent's report. With great thanks to Dr. Trinkle for her efforts on this, we, as a result of the budget that was passed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in late June or early July, we received nearly $300,000 in grant funding that we had to apply for and that we expect to receive. And I just wanted to talk briefly to the board about the allocations of this grant money and why we think using it in this way makes good sense. And certainly, we'll have an opportunity to discuss this at a future work session, but I wanted to just kind of pass this out. So the grant monies, again, just under $300,000, $294,000 that we anticipate receiving, are broken down into two areas. First being mental health supports, and the second being school safety. And so with these funds, one of our primary goals is to extend the time that we have our social worker. Some may know that this board decided to use some of the funding that came through the pandemic to bring on a social worker. We find this to be a very positive development and resource for our students, so we would like to devote some of this grant money to extend the time that our social worker is with us. We also intend to carry on and perhaps expand our utilization of the Karen Foundation. The Karen Foundation provides behavioral health assessments, support for substance relation, substance use problems, and mental health issues. Participation in this is 100% voluntary and requires the permission of a parent, but this is an added resource to help our students who are at risk. We also intend to continue with the purchase of something called Navigate, which is a computer program, software, and training platform that allows us to do threat assessment. So oftentimes, we'll have reports of concerns that come in, and we need to have a process in place to measure and ascertain and assess the extent to which these threats could have an impact on others. We also use this platform to monitor all of our district-wide emergency drills, fire drills, you know, shelter-in-place drills and related, so I think that's very positive. Second to last, we intend to purchase Safety Care, which is a training, a training platform for de-escalation and restraint. And one of the best ways to be safe is to avoid problems before they occur, and this training allows our staff the skills and ability to identify conflict and to be able to de-escalate that conflict, not escalate it, before it carries on into something that's worse. It also helps train our staff in the rare case where a restraint is necessary to do those restraints in ways that are compliant with the regulations and laws surrounding it. And finally, we're going to be devoting some of this grant money to support the great work that's done by our school resource officers, Officer McLaughlin and Officer Borso. Those are expenses to the district, but very valuable ones that we think pay great dividends to support the safety of our district. So those are the broad allocations of the grant. We would have preferred to broaden this to you in advance, but it was just a hurry to get the grant up and running and in. Trinkle's great work on this, and this could be certainly a discussion, but I wanted to throw this out for the board to know that these were the thoughts that we had with respect to both in the mental health and in the school safety. So unless there are any questions, Mrs. Reinhart, that concludes my report.
May I just have one question? Are these, are there recurring costs that are going to be associated with these? Is this a one-time grant? Is this, how many years?
This is, it is, it is a one-time grant, and some of these, well, for instance, the school resource officer is a recurring cost, but by utilizing, I think we put in about $70,000. It tries to, so we budget for this, but it takes a little pressure off the budget as we try to, you know, develop some of the efficiencies that we've talked about here before. So we try to always avoid matching recurring, non-recurring revenue to recurring costs. We largely have done so here. We anticipate when this grant expires, the social work position will expire, but that may be something we need to talk about more. But for now, it pushes off the time that the social worker is leaving, which we think is of great value to the school district.
What about the SRO costs? Will they be recurring, or is that a...
Yeah, the...
Right, I mean, what are we offsetting there with them? Is that salary, or is that...
Yeah, it is, it is. No, it is, yeah, I mean, we have a budget for them, which we anticipate to budget. This will allow us to take a little pressure off the budget for a one-year time, but we are, two years, I'm sorry, two years, two-year grant. But then, at the conclusion of that grant, we will always recognize that we'll have to refund that with our district, local district fund.
So we can take advantage of that, because that's, I guess, considered a safety issue, so it qualifies under the grant?
It qualifies under the grant, and each year, we have the ability to stop the program. So essentially, it's a new program every year. Now, we have no intention to stop it, but...
No, I think it's a good program.
But it is a good program.
It's good to take advantage of grant monies if it's a safety issue. Why not fund it there?
That was, that was Dr. Trinkle's thought.
Okay. Good thing, Karen.
Yes. I did a similar question with, I believe it was Navigate that we've used for a few years, the computer program to assist in safety drills and locating kids. Is that also a yearly renewal, or is that because it's a software, is that, do we have a couple of years on that?
That is, it's a yearly renewal, and we have found that it is of value, and we are utilizing it more than we ever had.
I was just going to say, Navigate, from what I understand, started here as something that, you know, we would try, and the IU had training, but Navigate has taken off, and I can't see us keeping our safety standards and keeping locating kids in emergencies with drills and getting rid of that. So I'm glad to hear we're continuing it.
And they've expanded, actually, to do this threat assessment thing.
The threat assessment as well, yes, which is the new piece, which is great. Okay, thanks. I just, I think it's a valuable piece for our schools. Thanks. And thanks to Dr. Trinkle for, grant writing is not easy, and it takes many hours behind a glowing computer. And we've driven past central office and noticed certain lights are on, so thank you, Dr. Trinkle.
Dr. Mann, could you give us an update on the bus? I don't want to necessarily bring it up, and I think you've done a great job on the board. I can never tell if it's coming to me as a board member, if it's coming to me as a parent, but I certainly feel like I'm updated. But I'm sure there might be people in the community that continue. I think it looked like better, maybe some better news is on the way, but I just thought maybe if you could just address some questions about that.
Well, yes. No, I thank you, Mr. Demick, for the question. We do believe better times are on the way, but times are not good now. Let's just be clear. We're having a very difficult time with our bus situation. This is not unique to Southernly High. This is a problem that's occurring across the Lehigh Valley, the Commonwealth, and actually across the nation. It comes down to the lack of bus drivers. We have some, and we've had a particularly bad stretch, where we have, I think, five bus drivers who are out, some COVID-related, others on some medical, other related medical issues. And while we anticipate drivers who are in training and returning from leave within the next two weeks, right now, we are short. And every time, every time we get a call in the morning that we do not have a driver, then we end up having to double up on a route. We've had to actually cancel some routes to our non-publics, and we are running very, very much behind on many, many of our routes in the morning. So our parents have shown great patience. We recognize this is an intolerable situation, because our parents have to get to work, and the planning around, you know, a 20-minute delay or a 30-minute delay is a big challenge for many of our families. We have, as of this week, moved to real-time texts, where if at 6 o'clock in the morning, as was the case today, we learned that a driver calls off, we will immediately get the text out. If you want to check our website, as soon as you go to our website, the message pops up, and so you could actually see what buses are going to be late that day. So I do believe later in September, and certainly in October, we'll be in a much better position. I think right now, we're probably at the lowest spot we're going to be with respect to demand for our drivers.
So I have a question about that. I mean, I appreciate all the updates, too. Given, I mean, right now, it's beyond our control, and I think you've done a good job of informing us of that. Have we looked into any temporary solutions? The reason I ask is because the lateness is clearly contributing to a pretty big loss of instructional time, especially, you know, if you look at kindergarteners are missing, you know, 30 minutes to an hour of a somewhat, you know, small, short day to begin with. So I just, I mean, have we thought of solutions with subcontractors? Perhaps Norman's Bus Service, for example, we use them for some routes. Could we utilize them? Because there's some that we already know, for example, for the whole week.
and the planning around, you know, a 20-minute delay or a 30-minute delay is a big challenge for many of our families. We have, as of this week, moved to real-time texts, where if at 6:00 in the morning, as was the case today, we learn that a driver calls off, we will immediately get the text out. If you want to check our website, as soon as you go to our website, the message pops up, and so you could actually see what buses are going to be late that day. So, I do believe later in September, and certainly in October, we'll be in a much better position. I think right now, we're probably at the lowest spot we're going to be with respect to demand for for our drivers.
So, I have a question about that. I mean, I appreciate all the updates, too. Given, I mean, right now, it's beyond our control, and I think you've done a good job of informing us of that. Have we looked into any temporary solutions? The reason I ask is because the lateness is clearly contributing to a pretty big loss of instructional time, especially, you know, if you look at kindergarteners are missing, you know, 30 minutes to an hour of a somewhat, you know, small, short day to begin with. So, I just, I mean, have we thought of solutions with subcontractors, perhaps Norman's Bus Service, for example? We use them for some routes. Could we utilize them? Because there's some that we already know, for example, for the whole week are going to be short. So, you know, I know some, some community members had reached out regarding solutions. I know carpooling and that type of thing, while helpful, you can't really pull kids, you can't pull routes entirely, it just isn't, it's too sporadic within a route itself, but just throwing out some ideas. If you've talked to Brandywine and Norman's.
Yes, very, and we actually have supplemented our bus routes with more vans. The problem is the capacity issue comes up. It's easier to get a van driver than it is a bus driver because the credentials are dramatically different. But we had, even going to the Career Tech Center, the LCTI, we had too many students on the bus, we utilized vans to augment that, as we are continuing to do. So, we're using, I think, every vehicle possible, and it really, the issue comes down to drivers, but Dr. Serene, you are totally correct, and we've been trying to, to a smaller degree, to leverage the van services to offset some of these challenges.
I know that due to staff reductions, we've also kind of augmented some of arrival times in schools this year. I know, like, an IS parent pickup situation, but in the mornings especially, I recall as a parent dropping off, that you used to be able to perhaps get kids in there sooner because they could go into a whole, like, a cafeteria or an auditorium and be monitored, but my understanding is that due to some staff reductions, we don't have those extra bodies to do that. Is there a possibility of adding, you know, just on a temporary basis while we have this issue, so that parents who, instead of waiting the 20 or 30 minutes, could indeed drop kids off at 7:00, 7:05, as we used to do in the past, and that way, they could get their kid to school on time and perhaps still make it to work on time? Just, I mean, it wouldn't work for all kids, but just as a temporary solution?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the staffing issues where they were cut back.
I just, whenever, I think, like, IA positions are not necessarily full-time teach, although we have lost a few full-time teachers, teaching positions, mostly from an IA or extra, like a secretarial position, that in the past could cover those spaces. We don't have as many. I know we reduced our secretarial pool by at least one, if not two, in a building or two, and we don't have as many IAs this year as we did.
I'm unaware of that having any impact on buildings being opened or closed in the mornings.
Earlier, from an early, okay.
So, I, so now, there may be, there may be opportunity for us to open buildings earlier, but I do not believe that we are opening buildings later because of a lack of staffing.
I mean, my understanding was, for example, at the middle school, kids, you know, you can drop them off a little bit, like, at 7:15, right? 7:15, but the doors are already open probably at 7:10. I'm one of those that needs to drop off a little bit earlier, and I know students can't quite enter the building. They can stand, like, on the blue carpet, is what I've been told. They can't go into the classrooms because I think technically, you know, staff hasn't started, you know, their hours, which I understand. So, you know, could we potentially, for example, have, you know, because there's people greeting the students at the door, could one individual, for example, be, you know, in the auditorium, and students have a study hall, you know, until they're allowed to go to halls, for example? Just, because I think a lot of parents in Southern Lehigh clearly drive their kids. I mean, I've seen that based on the traffic patterns. Just, you know, just throwing out some solutions just to help us, because October is still a bit away.
Oh, definitely, definitely. No, and that may help for parents who would otherwise not drive them but have to leave very, very early. I think our real problem is parents who have to stay late to drive them. So, we'll see if there's any opportunity to open the buildings. I don't know what the history is here, but usually, it's an issue of, if you bring in one or two people, that's very hard with a large number of students, like in an auditorium or whatnot. So, again, I am unaware of any reductions in staffing that have caused our buildings to have to open up later than in the past, but we'll see if some adjustments can be made to allow for earlier entry. But I know it, sometimes that does present a set of challenges, but let's look into it, and we'll see if we come up with any additional solutions.
Yeah, and also anything that could be, come up with, because it's going to start to get colder, so if kids have an unanticipated bus wait out there, I have concerns as it gets darker in the mornings and colder. If we could try to come up with something, since we don't have an embedded, like, Y-Care or something, perhaps we could supplement in some way or get creative in that regard, because I'm sure we're going to have, continue to have this problem, even though we're aware of it ending for these particular bus-driving individuals.
It'll be with us, it'll be with us.
Yeah, it'll be with us, exactly. So, if we could also come up with those solutions so we don't have kids, especially little ones.
Right.
Thanks.
Did want to say real quick, Dr. May, and that hopefully, our community will continue to have, and I know they will, but every once in a while, you hear some negative feedback on the bus drivers themselves, and I know, I'm aware, I think, at least one bus driver today, I think, made three runs, you know, in the afternoon, and so, you know, these are folks that have a pretty difficult job themselves, and so I hope we're not attributing, to your point, it's obvious that it's just a lack of drivers, it's not a lack of effort on the, of the drivers that we do have. So, I think it's important to recognize, some of them are doing quite a bit more than probably that is required of them, and I sure appreciate, I think people in the community should be aware of that and appreciative towards everybody. That's one way to get more bus drivers and to have more is to, you know, greet them with a smile and make them feel appreciated when they're out there on their runs, because I don't always get the feeling that your average school bus driver feels the most appreciated out there. So, I hope our community is doing it. I think the vast majority of us are, but I do think there are one or two people that would be kind of negative towards that, and I would say to most of us, I'm not sure, I would want to be driving around, you know, the hills of Lower Milford with, you know, 30 of our finest in the back, so.
Yeah, no, and I'll tell you, that's very true, Mr. Demick. Our bus drivers are doing great work. Be nice to your bus driver, all right? Be nice, because we need them more than ever, and I will agree with you, that I know we have a few teachers in the room, teachers have very challenging jobs, but at least they can see their students in front of them, and they're not operating heavy equipment at the same time. So, I will tell you that we need to be very grateful to our bus drivers, the district staff, and the staff of our transportation company is also working very hard at all hours trying to address this, so this is, it's a problem we're going to have to work through, and hopefully, it'll be getting better, but right now, it is certainly problematic.
And last but not least comment, could we add the LCTI to the pop-up notifications?
All right.
The timing of the run.
Okay.
Because parents have been calling in and not getting a response.
I'm sorry, MJ, did you say add LCTI to that bus notification? That's a great idea. Yeah, thanks, I just couldn't hear you.
Sorry.
I think you were facing that way, and your mic, your mic. No, thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. Under curriculum, student and staff services and special education and student services, we have a number of, number of items to approve. I'd like to take those together. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on any of those items?
Just that it's a great event, and I'm glad it's covered with Title III, right? Title III funding? So, it's, yet again, thanks for, thanks for manning those grants. It's no cost to our taxpayers, great use of funds, great event.
Good job. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those motions are approved. Under budget and finance, we have a motion for the Southernly High School Board Directors to approve the appointment of Kevin C. Reed, Esquire of King Spry Herman and Frund and Frall LLC, to serve as bond counsel for an estimated bond or bank loan not to exceed $8 million at a fee amount not to exceed $12,000 plus expenses. In addition, as set forth in their proposal dated August 24th through 2022, King Spry Herman Frund and Frall LLC agreed to waive the solicitor's fee, typically 50% of the bond counsel's fee. Note, all fees are not due until closing, and in the event the district does not close, only actual costs incurred would be reimbursed. Do we have any? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Who, okay, did you catch that? Emery?
I wasn't raising my hand for motion, I had a question, but I forgot the motion was first, so.
Motion. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Comments and questions? Go ahead, Ms. Gaiman.
Yeah, thanks, I had a question. I know that in a prior, maybe the immediately prior board meeting, we had a vote to approve Chris Gaiman and bonding through that. Can you explain how this coordinates with those two, these two surfaces coordinate, and what the plan is, just the funding plan and how this is going to be used?
Yes, yes. The, the vote for Mr. Gaiman's and Concord Financial commissioned him to go look at the market for banks and bonds and to develop financing options that the district might consider using for this construction and also construction at the intermediate school, which at this point is unknown, as far as its costs are concerned. Now, so, Mr. Gaiman's did that, he went to all of the banks, and he developed a sheet that described what financing would cost for us. Simultaneously, district administration reviewed our audit report, looked at our fund balances, and at our last facility committee, we had a discussion about how best to finance the stadium project. And with the stadium project coming in at about $6 million, and looking at our fund balance, which is more than $13 million at this point, it was determined that it made very good sense for the stadium project to avoid the added costs and interest of a loan or a bond issuance and to fund the stadium through our reserves. Now, we recognize that we have potential unknown costs that we should have a better handle on in October or early November at the latest for the brick issues and the external wall issues that are going on at the intermediate school. And so, depending upon the severity and estimates for that work, we may or may not want to borrow money for that aspect of construction. And by approving this tonight, and regardless whether they do bank loans or bonds, we will need a bond counsel. And so, by approving this tonight, the district appoints Mr. Reed from King Spry, and once the numbers come in, we'll be prepared to have to come to some decision as to what, if any, amount we'll borrow, but as noted in the motion, if the board decides at some point that there's not really a need to borrow, that we could, you know, let's say we get unexpectedly positive news for the cost of the repairs at the school, then we may not need to borrow at all, in which case, no, no fees would be paid.
Okay, and, and I guess it's a shame that Mr. Gaiman's or Mr. Pepe isn't here tonight, because the only other question, and I don't know if you're going to be able to answer it, is in sitting through some of these conversations before, it's my understanding that those, like, bricks, HVAC, roofs, walls, it's going to be a pretty hefty bill, which is what we were facing before, when we were looking at overhaul and overall construction and new buildings and new facilities, you know, two, three, five years ago, to kind of put those in. So, I'm aware of the extent to which we might be talking about, although this is the plan to piecemeal it, given the changing, you know, economic situation. But my question is, right now, rates, even though they've gone up, are still the lowest, it's the cheapest money we will ever borrow, and those rates, if we wait month after month, are only going to go up. And so, my question is, why, why are we with this first project that we know we need to fund for $6 million, and we know if we wait to borrow money, those rates are going to go up? This is the cheapest we will ever buy money. Why are we not, I thought the previous plan was to issue a bond or loan for that very reason, and then perhaps because of those maintenance events that general fund balance is used to cover more frequently, you know, the replacement of roofs and windows, you use it like a savings account, like any homeowner would. You bank money, and then you use your banked money to, you let it grow interest as rates go up, and then use it to replace your roof. So, my question is, since this is the lowest rate we'll ever have, why is the decision to not borrow for the stadium?
Sure.
Not being made?
Yes.
Because we're only going to face a higher rate, and we're definitely going to pay millions of dollars in HVAC and roofs and walls on multiple buildings.
Yes, so, it's a complex question, let me try to go at it.
Right, that's why I wish Lou, yeah, yeah.
And I think, and hopefully, I'll be able to do it justice. First, our hope is that as we work on our budget, that we will run annual surpluses rather than annual deficits. And to the extent that we're running an annual surplus, that money will be designated to capital reserve, that will allow us to knock off the smaller projects like a roof, like an HVAC. We also have, again, thanks to Dr. Trinkle, about $1.5 million in the original grants from the pandemic that we intend to use for HVAC. So, we have some money put aside that will mitigate that. With respect to interest rates, some will say that interest rates are surely going up, others will say interest rates may not, some will say that the economy is overheating, others will say we're on our way to recession, and so, it's my view that I don't know where interest rates are going, right? They could be going up, and they could be going down, but wherever they're going, where they currently are is priced into the market. All right? And so, for us then to look to borrow $6 million, we know that the carrying cost of that loan, including the transaction cost, which are not insignificant, will be higher than any interest that we would lose on the $6 million if we draw it from our fund balance. So.
Currently.
Currently, and, well, right, and to the extent that rates, that interest rates go up, interest rates will also go up on what we're earning in our, in our fund balance. And so, for us to say, in my estimation, that by borrowing money, now, and the other point, too, is that the intermediate school is not a project we intend to do in five years from now. It will be a project that we intend to do likely this summer. And so, the, so we spoke at, you know, to Mr. Gaiman's, and he is going to get back to us, but we believe we can extend the rate offer that we have now for about 60 days, and so, we will likely be able to access money should we need to for the intermediate school at rates that are the same as or similar to the rates that we could access funds if we were approving a loan tonight. And so, and then, the final thought is that with a budget, and so, if, if, once we borrow, that $6 million becomes part of an operational cost, right? So, we will have a debt service to pay on $6 million. That debt service must be drawn from either taxes, because again, it's an operational recurring cost, or it must be drawn from other parts of the budget, namely, instruction, that's where the money is. And so, rather than, and I've always thought that you must have a balanced budget, you cannot run a structural deficit. I believe when the audit report comes out, and I don't have the final number, that we will run this year a surplus, a structural surplus, so it's not as if we need to draw a fund balance for operational costs. The second thing we must do, all right, is get as much money devoted to instruction as possible, and so, by not diverting money from elsewhere in the budget to carry a $6 million debt service, allows us to preserve issues on instruction, and thirdly, to try to avoid tax increases. And by drawing from what is a large fund balance that has been built up over time to the credit of this district over the years, leveraging that fund balance to mitigate tax increases, I think is a very wise use of it, so.
I have some questions about that. So, what is the absolute floor at this point with respect? I know it's, it's a percentage of our, of our budget, so just kind of to reiterate for everyone's understanding with respect to the fund balance itself, how low can we go?
Well, I mean, you could go to zero.
Right, but how low should we not go beyond?
I don't think you, 8% is my number, 6% is Mr. Pepe's number.
Okay.
So, for me, call it 8% to be safe.
Because I have, you know, I understand, I'm not wanting, I get the, what you, your explanation was very helpful, actually, with respect to the, the interest gain versus interest loss, like, that made more sense to me then, because I didn't understand, you know, why we are suddenly looking towards the fund balance. I mean, yes, it's, it's, it's money that we have set aside for projects, however, I have concerns because we have other projects that are going to necessitate money, and, you know, for example, the additional turf field that we had talked about, I believe that was another 1 to 2 million bill, is that? Yeah, so, 1.2 million. So, you know, that's something that's going to be coming up, I think, in years, because I, you know, I foresee usage being an issue, like, even though we want to try to be equitable, and once you get a taste of the turf field, more people are going to want the turf field, which, and all, you know, to be fair, is understandable. You also brought up instruction, and I guess, just from a perspective of how we choose to utilize the fund balance and when, you know, you're talking about a surplus, which is, which is great, you know, I'm always a fan, I'm a big fan of a surplus as opposed to a deficit, but my concern is, at what cost, right? You know, I, I want, let me make it very clear, I want these fields, these projects clearly need to move forward, but we have HVAC that needs to go move forward as well. I have some, some concerns regarding instruction in our. You know, I, I want, let me make it very clear, I want these fields, these projects clearly need to move forward, but we have HVAC that needs to go move forward as well. I have some, some concerns regarding instruction in our district that, you know, have been brought to light, you know, to my attention in the past weeks since school started. I know we talked about class sizes, for example, it sounds like those are, those are pretty much within what we expected or below, and I know you're still working on that with respect to civics, but, you know, one of the honors civics classes, for example, at the ninth, at the ninth grade level, doesn't have an assigned teacher, that's a civics teacher, is my understanding. It's a substitute teacher, I believe, I think that she might be a health teacher, I'm not clear. However, what's happening is those students are not getting instruction, so their class size might be good, but they're not actually getting civics instruction from a civics instructor, they're getting assignments posted on Google Classroom for them to do by another teacher who is a social studies teacher. So to me, you know, we talked about how screens were not better, that the value of instruction is first and foremost, right? But we have to be able to prioritize both, right? So if we are willing to use our fund balance, which is our reserve for a rainy day, in my opinion, why aren't we utilizing funds like these for teachers, you know, for our students? AP Calculus has a waiting list, and they have 32 students, so just
Right.
These are examples in which that worry me, still want the field, but why are we having situations like these arise at the same time?
Am I correct in saying we're waiting for a teacher? Okay, so what I will tell you is that this has nothing to do with budget.
Parents weren't told, that, you know, I know, but parents weren't told.
But you're asking about budget, and again, if we didn't tell parents, we should know.
Yeah, I'm asking about budgeting for teachers and instructors.
Yes. And let me be very clear, all right? If parents weren't told that this is going to occur, that's an issue of communication. But if the issue is for budget, we hired a teacher who will be here once they are released from their previous placement, wherever it is they're coming from.
But could the long-term sub or the sub that's assigned at least be relative to the subject matter at hand?
And what I will tell you is that we would go out and try to find the best possible sub, and we would not say, well, let's hire someone who's not good at history or math or any other course, because that's what, we would hire the best person who was available. And if today, we have a sub in there as we wait for a highly qualified teacher who went through a very rigorous hiring process, who we believe will be excellent long-term, if we did not have a sub available, if we had a sub available who was great at civics, they would be teaching there. But right now, there just may not be those people available, and that is doing the best we can over a short period of time, but is not reflective of a lack of commitment to instruction, nor is it reflective of an effort to somehow save money. It's a matter of the reality of having a great teacher who just simply can't be here at this minute because they're coming from another place.
And I understand that this situation is not, I get what you're saying, right? The situation is somewhat distinct from the vote, but we, there was a budget that was approved, I shouldn't say we, because I disagreed with it. We weren't willing to budget because it's a recurring cost and staffing costs the most money to replace teachers in certain subjects. We knew we were losing a number of teachers because S R funding was going away. And then I'm hearing about, you know, recurring costs and grants and how, you know, we still find certain positions important enough that, you know, when you were talking earlier about threat assessment and that type of funding, so those grants, when they go away, we just, we are still, and hopefully this is gonna make sense, it's been a long day, but we're still willing to replenish those areas with respect to the budget. But I, I guess, I, I don't understand why we're so ready to dip into a fund balance, which by the way, once it keeps going down, we won't have money for other things, because that's just the nature of the beast. It took time to accrue that amount, and it was done through, you know, I remember our business advisor from a couple of rounds ago, you know, great investment over time. So my worry is that, you know, what kind of message are we sending here in that we don't value, I, I wanna make sure we continue to value the educational piece and academics. And I'm certainly not saying that anyone up here doesn't believe in academics, but we didn't replace teachers that left with respect to, you know, certain number that we discussed, you know, right, Dr. Mayon? And we didn't replace teachers that we lost because of S R funding going away, you know, because it was a, a cost that we had never incurred. So why didn't we think to go into the fund balance to pay for some of those positions that were just?
Sure. And if I, if I may respond to that, first I would say that the board hired these teachers years ago on a temporary basis. And if the board at that time thought it was appropriate to have these teachers as part of our staff, they could have certainly hired them then. But suddenly hire, like pretty much every other district.
But wait a minute, that's exactly, that is, I will.
Recognize.
I will.
The, yeah.
Yeah, I will let you answer, but I'm gonna come back to that.
The teachers who were funded by the grants were always anticipated to leave at a certain time. And like all districts in Pennsylvania that I'm aware of, they said, this is for mitigation of damage done by the pandemic. And when people are out of school and now that they're back in school, the thought is, again, not just me sitting here saying it, but everybody thought that once the grants expire for pandemic mitigation, regrettably, these teachers would go away because the federal government didn't keep paying. You may ask the federal government, why didn't they keep paying? These teachers are valuable. Well, they didn't, all right? And so for that cost to be shifted would have been very significant. Now, if the district wanted to hire 13 teachers for, that were in place for pandemic mitigation to carry on, I guess they could have, right? But that was not a small thing. And with respect to, you know, what we did this year, we rolled back two social studies teachers, that the numbers come out, looked like it was not an unreasonable approach, but of the two that we live, we hired an additional one for elementary. So we are down net one teacher this year. And I believe that in looking at the numbers, we had, we had the capacity to do that without too much difficulty, and I think the numbers bear it out. And with respect to dipping into fund balance for recurring costs as a, you know, as a comparison here, you know, we, we said, what was it? Navigate, you mentioned as a recurring cost. Well, that's $16,000. And so if we want to compare that to two or three or five, it is several orders of magnitude different there. So I think to conflate a $16,000 expense with a $16 million expense or 1.6 million, however many you want to equate, I don't think accurately reflects where we are in this conversation. So I think so long as we're talking about the same orders of magnitude in funding, it's fair to say, you know, what are we doing here? Do we have a commitment or not a commitment to instruction? All right? And, and with respect to the fund balance, 8% comes out to about $5.6 million, call it six to be safe, right? If, if we bring it now down from 13 or so, we're at about eight when we pay for this stadium project. So we still have a very comfortable fund balance, and, and a fund balance, again, in response to your question, Dr. Reed, the fund balance, we are not a bank, and we should not hold money longer or more than, than we need to. And so if, if we were running deficits and we were drawing on fund balance as we have for a number of years, but we're not, then I would say, well, we have to be careful. But I think this year we have a positive, a very positive result, which we hope to announce when the audit comes. We, we need to have further commitment to control costs. Some of that is at times difficult, and it's a community decision for us to discuss. But I, I don't see any of what I believe to be thoughtful planning to finance this as any indication of a lack of instruction, and in fact, it has been my thought that by avoiding taking on operational costs as far as a debt payment, it allows us to preserve the instructional costs that allow us to keep hiring teachers or to maintain teachers or not to riff them. Because too much debt is something to be avoided when we have, as a bank, money in reserve to do exactly this kind of thing for the community. So again, people may disagree, but that is certainly my perspective, and it is done in an effort to support instruction, not to diminish it.
Could you reiterate the?
Those teacher salaries, I just wanna, because I jumped in, I stopped, but I just, the point I wanted to make is, those teacher salaries that were funded through grants in the, were funded that way in the hopes that those funds would be found going forward. So those civics and social worker, but specifically civics, that were eliminated, it is exactly the situation years ago, it is exactly the same situation as you are buying yourself time with now. Tonight you said that it buys us time, the grants that Dr. Trinkle helped write, are you being used to fund salaries for SROs and a salary for a social worker, that you said, well, they, while they are recurring, and lumped together, it is commensurate with a teacher salary, what, it buys us time, and we do not intend to eliminate it, but it buys us time. So to say, for you to say that if the prior decision makers could have permanent, could have permanently budgeted for this instead of grants, if that what they had intended, the same could be said for what you said tonight. You could permanently fund, it's just, I just wanna point out, I do not think it is a fair comparison, because we were buying time, those decision makers were also buying time. And now the decision, rightfully so, it is, is the prerogative of those who are sitting here in power now to make, the decision was made to eliminate those, but that does not assume that that was the intent all along.
And just a, a quick point. I believe it's also safe to say that had COVID never come along, those teachers and those positions never would have been added at any point in time. They were added because of the situation, which was temporary, and because of funding that was available to do so, to assist in the student's education, given what we were dealing with at that time. Had that never occurred, I doubt very seriously that we would have ever added those teachers' positions.
This is Game, let me, let me respond, because perhaps I was unclear.
Yeah, please do.
When I, when I spoke of the district's social worker, I said that that is extended in time, and that we would still intend to eliminate the position when it's over. Now, for the 13 other positions, grant, federal grants just didn't come along to allow us that opportunity, it didn't. But I am not saying now we're hiring the social worker, I'm saying we have the opportunity with much less money to extend the social worker. I made, and I hope, and this is where I'll make the clarification, I hope I made that distinct from the school resource officer, where I said to Mr. Demick, that takes some pressure off our budget, but we intend to budget it as we always have as an operational item. So the social worker is something that we have extended because we had some resources to do it, small in comparison to the resources for 13 teachers, but keeping in mind that it is the same understanding as the previous teachers, where we have a small amount of money that we're allowed to extend a job, but once those funds are out, then the position will have no expectation to continue. And so I, I hope I was saying the same thing for the social worker as the board did when it talked about those 13 teachers.
So I understand, it was, for me, it wasn't the combined facts.
There were other folks who wanted to make comments, so let me come back to you after everybody else has a chance. Thanks. Mr. Ma.
Very quickly, could you clarify the, the cost, annual cost in simplest terms of a $6 million bond issued annually? Basically, the interest, it's six figures, correct?
I think that it would be, 1.3 million comes to my.
I, I have, I have the data ready. So to borrow $6 million, now, this was a bank note, and these were very favorable rates with a maximum of 4.5%, locked in at 2.88% for seven years. The maximum amount to borrow 6 million would cost the district 8.485 million, so 2.4 million dollars it would cost in interest to, to, and that's for six. If we were to do eight, it would cost the district 3, 11.6 total.
And if you were to amortize that over 10 or 15 years,
That's over 15.
I think it comes out about 1.3, if I'm, if memory serves, and I could easily be, I'll stand to be a state. As far as a yearly payment, an operational payment.
Yeah, that's, 8 million was 1.3.
1.3 million.
And for 6 million, it's a million, it's 991.
And so we would start next year's budget, 1.3 million behind where we would otherwise start this year. Now, we would have more money in our fund balance, obviously, some of that would be mitigated by interest rates, because there's an arbitrage there. But the reality is, we would be a million dollars in the hole, where we'd be knocking on people's doors, either to look at other points in the budget or to knock on our taxpayer doors to raise that millage. And that's what I had hoped to try to avoid.
That, see, that's, that's, I think that's genius. And, you know, let's be clear what an oversized fund balance is, is of how much we've overtaxed the people, that's what that is. And quite frankly, if you continue to ride with one that size, you don't make the tough decisions operationally, because you have that fund balance. And I think it makes absolute sense, i- if you have on a one-time spend on a, on a project like this, and you have fund balance well in excess of 68%, that you spend it on this type of project, and what, to say that that would affect instruction going forward, it's the opposite. By doing that, you don't have the pressure yearly of the bond costs going forward on the people that are coming into kindergarten now, whose instruction over the next 15 years suffers because of the extra interest and the cost every year that comes out of our operational budget, that essentially is coming out of your ability to hire teachers, which I'm all for class sizes and instruction. I, I don't see the argument here. I think it's so clearly the right decision, I don't even see it as being a, a choice. And on top of it, I can tell you, I've been on this board longer than anybody, and I've seen that stinking fund balance at that size forever, and I've had finance folks tell us over and over again, this is the year that thing's coming down, we're gonna spend it up. It's always been there, it's always been an example of overtaxation, and what it does is, it gives you a false sense, like we've done for the last three to four years, that you can afford to go into the red and operate on a budget where you're not balancing the budget each year by accomplishing what this administration has done, which is to balance the budget now. And if it looks like we can balance the budget going forward, which I am confident that I believe we can, then it's, I think, absolutely makes all the sense in the world to use this extra funds to pay for this, so our future kids and future boards don't have to make tougher decisions on the costs of, as, because they're, you know, impacted by the bonds that we would have. So I think it makes all the sense in the world, and what it does, if I was a teacher in this district, I'd say amen to that. Because what it, what it does is it allows you to understand your budget and predict what your costs are, and it allows us to, in fact, use some of that additional cost in instruction, as opposed to paying millions to banks for the loan. So I, I think, I didn't think of it, it was obviously told us by the administration, Lou gets the, somebody gets the thumbs up for it, but I, I just don't, I honestly don't see the argument against it at all. It, just complete common sense to me. Now, I got some questions about the stadium project and the costs there, which won't, you know, the, the audience won't be happy about, and I've generally voted against turf and all this other stuff. But I'm looking forward to asking questions about that, because it is a lot of money. But as to the way we finance it, if we do it, I, makes 100% sense to me to take it out of the fund balance, we can afford it, that's the right way to do it. And I, I don't in one for second believe that it's gonna impact instruction, I think the opposite, that I think it'll provide us greater options in the future, so that we can finally get that high school librarian that I've been asking for forever, people keep asking for turf forever, I've been asking for a freaking high school librarian forever. So there are some things I'd like to see accomplished in the future, and I think this way of funding it makes that a possibility. So thank you for thinking outside the box, administration, it's, I know it's a team effort, it's not just Lou, it's not just Dr. Mayon, I think it's, and I do wanna thank the, the facilities committee, I'm sure also had a hand in the plan. But as to the way we finance this, again, I have some questions about the project itself, but as to the way we finance it, I think it's, it's definitely the way to go. From my long experience of that fund balance in this district, it's time for that thing to get down to a reasonable level. I, I think it does nothing but cause us to overspend on issues. Thank you.
I mean, I just, I agree that we should not take on more debt. I, I'm not arguing for that. What I'm asking is, one, okay, we, we know fund balance, the percentage, right? You've mentioned it. What is that number? Can, if you could just say it out loud, what that would be, what's 8% of our operating?
Call it, call it 6 million.
Okay.
It's a little less, but 6 is a good number.
Okay, so currently our fund balance is at what? You said, just to reiterate.
14.7.
Okay, so we're close to 15.
Yeah, call it 15, call it 15.
All right. So we'll have almost nine left, eight, eight, nine. So that's not bad, right? So I just wanna know, are we then willing to not incur more debt moving forward with additional work that needs to be done? Because, you know, you're, you're talking about, you know, consulting with respect to bonds, I know that the value I know that the value, the expense is far less for the bricks, for example, at the IS. You know, I'm just talking about what we know is coming down the pike. We know the Liberty Bell roof, we know has some needs with respect to replacement, right? Am I correct? So we've got the roof at Liberty Bell, we have the bricks at the IS. We know there's a lot of HVAC issues. I mean, there's like a dehumidifier, I believe, in the, in the library at the high school, which is atrocious. We don't have a librarian, but we, we do have a dehumidifier in the library there. And I know that some classes are really hot, some classes are really cold, depending on the building. You know, clearly we need HVAC too, which is costly. So I want to know, are we then committed to, because it sounds like our fund balance will still be fairly healthy, I want to be able to keep using it then instead of taking on more debt, like you're saying, so we don't, you know, restrict our, our hands when it comes to teachers? Because it seems like if we knew we had such a hefty fund balance, then why weren't we willing to continue or maintain some instructions? I know the ESSR teachers were going away, but why didn't we want to replace? I did, I wanted to replace the teachers, I think that's pretty clear. So my point is then we need to keep doing it. You need to be, you know, the commitment to dipping into the fund balance has to be there for other necessary projects too, so that that debt.
Right, yeah, of course.
Because then why are we talking about bonds and loans for, for that then, right?
Well, because, because we don't know what the cost of the intermediate school is going to be. And as I said, because we don't, the, do we, do we?
It'll be less than 6 million though, right?
We don't know.
We don't know.
We do not know what it is. And so what I'm saying is if that project comes back at 10 million, and I don't think it's going to be 10.
I mean, that would be really.
But in other words, this is a very serious issue that has gone unaddressed at the intermediate school that we are now looking at to try to fix. And the people have come at it and have told us, this is serious and we don't know exactly how to fix it. It's gotten worse over time. And now we have to develop a solution and we are now in the planning phases and we don't know what, we will not even hazard a guess until we have.
Okay, okay. I'm going to time out everybody.
So we're just passing it forward.
Dr. Serene, I haven't had a chance. I have not had a chance to talk. This motion is, as I understand it, Ms. Moyer is about bon, appointing bond counsel. Yes? Okay. So do we have any other questions with regard to the appointment of bond counsel and the terms in this motion?
Hold on one second.
Okay. Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Great. King Spry is appointed. Within the budget and finance section, others, we need a motion to approve the National Purchasing Cooperative Interlocal Participation Agreement with buy board at no cost. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments?
This will be purchased how and will there be a separate vote on it?
This B, 6B, really is just a membership for us. In order for us, we're purchasing materials and supplies off cooperative bid lists. To do so, you must be a member of the bid list. So B simply makes us a member of the national, national purchasing cooperative. And by virtue of that membership, we'll be able to purchase from that cooperative, which is where Sourcewell gets their, their field materials from.
And I'm assuming there's some sort of local or state cooperative, but this couldn't be sourced through any of that. I mean, that was probably looked at, but we, because it says Texas here, and that's why we've never entered into something to purchase it through that?
Right. There's, there's a number of national cooperatives that meet the requirements of Pennsylvania for cooperative purchasing. It happens that the materials that this Shaw turf is delivered through this cooperative purchasing group, and in order for us to take advantage of it, we have to be a member of it, so that's.
And that's down in Texas, which is why the new vote to become a member of that would be necessary.
Right, right. Well, I think it's, but it's like a national thing.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I was just looking up the, yeah, whatever this address is in.
Right.
Yeah, Texas.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. I'm going to take all of the support service athletic field topics together and hope that we can discuss this as one, under one motion. But there are several here, and one is to approve the synthetic turf and track with a contract not to exceed $4,562,939.71. The high school stadium athletic field bleachers and press box in the amount of $1,086,281. And the athletic field lighting with Sourcewell National Cooperative Purchase Agreement, that bid is in the amount of $343,168. So can I have a motion?
Second.
Second is by Mr. Maude. Okay, okay. Comments and questions? Mr. Demme?
I haven't spoken. Sure. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead.
You've got to turn on your mic and speak into it, please, so that the folks out there listening to us remotely can actually hear this discussion.
As far as the costs associated with doing all of this, I agree that paying, using the fund balance and saving us money is fantastic. But I will state that, well, during the last election, our new board members had said that they would upgrade our athletic facilities through sponsorships. And as to date, the only sponsored funds we currently have are those being provided by St. Luke's that the old board secured as part of the stadium project we started back in 2020. And I'm very much hoping to see that come to fruition with the sponsorships, because if we're going to dip into fund balance that hard, I'm hoping to see those sponsorships come through.
Yeah, I think. Yeah.
Just talk directly.
Okay. To Kyle's point there, I do think, one of the questions I had was the scoreboard. And I don't believe the scoreboard is included in any of these motions that we're voting on tonight, but my understanding is there's a desire to do something on the scoreboard. So my first question is, does the quoted cost include anything for a scoreboard? Or is it for a very baseline new scoreboard, but we want to have a better scoreboard? Or is there completely nothing funding funded in, in regards to a school board, a scoreboard?
Mr. Demme, I think we pulled out the scoreboard for this, and it was, actually, I'm, I'm taking responsibility, there, there was a scoreboard in the original bid, or in the proposal. And I, I really did not highlight the various options to the facility committee of what it's going to be. You can get something very elaborate and something that is far less so. The elaborate ones often will provide opportunity for sponsorship that other districts have said have been helpful to them. Smaller ones at a higher cost, obviously, for the equipment. Smaller ones do not provide that, but have a lower cost. And so there are many different variations among scoreboards and costs associated that I hope to report out to the facility committee that will then report out to the board. And at some future time, we'll be coming back with a proposal for a scoreboard. I don't know what that would be, large or small, until we have a chance to review the options with the committee.
Okay. I think that's one area I would like to, you know, and it's not really the job, I don't think of the administration to somehow figure out private funding for that type of thing. But it seems to me that that would be a, an item that there may be a potential for that. I, I would prefer to see payment in advance in that somebody maybe wants to pay for some of that in order to have a sponsor with it as opposed to us buying a more expensive LED and then seeking out a sponsorship. So I have some concerns over a scoreboard, but it's not included, because I think that's more of a nice to have than a must have. And I do think at some point, we have to draw the line to all of our comments this evening. While all these things are great, I think, I think reaching around $6 million is, is at least from my perspective, you know, is responsible. But beyond that, I think as it, as we continue to fund athletics, you know, with a scoreboard or other things going forward, I would take a keener eye towards those things. What's the impact of a six lane track versus an eight lane track? As my understanding, this is a six lane track. And as an old track guy myself, I don't think that's a problem from my view too much, but I, I suspect it would, might have some issues with having bigger meets. Generally, you can't have a six, a large meet, you know, more than, you know, inner squa, air, conference games, but I don't think we'd be hosting anybody there. Is that accurate?
Right. Well, in addition to cost, the physical constraints of the bleachers made the installation of an eight track not feasible. And any, remember the committee can please correct me on anything I'm saying here, but it was just not a, a, short of, you know, pulling back bleachers on visitor's side, that was not something that was, that was deemed to be feasible.
Can I ask a question about that? Because it came up during comments too. And I mean, I think one of the benefits of having nicer facilities is that it's a larger draw potentially for revenue, right? Like you can host events at your facility that, you know, incur larger crowds, that pay ticket fees and that type of thing. So I'm not sure, I mean, doesn't the larger, the larger number of lanes within a track itself allow?
Nobody comes to watch track, trust me. It's unfortunate, it's unfortunate. Look, I can say that, I ran it, that's what I did. Nobody was there cheering for me except for my parents and even them sometimes not.
No, Jeff, I'm thinking of like, you know, districts or like, you know, hosting larger.
I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I, I would love to hear somebody that would know about this.
Can you do that with six? Is what I'm saying as opposed to.
Oh, well, I think my point is, I think even beyond track.
See, I didn't think so, yeah.
Right, it's unlikely we'll be hosting big track event. We'll have great track for our athletes and our games and our meets, but it's unlikely we'll be hosting large events. And, and it was not, well, let's just add two lanes because it would, more than that because of the constraints of the bleachers and fitting it in, so.
Yeah, I think adding two additional lanes, because they're four, four feet, that would add 16 feet total. Our current track is elongated, it's a 400 meter track, but it's an elongated track. So we are going to widen it to fit a soccer field, a PIAA regulation field. It's not the maximum size soccer field, however, so we really are constrained with, with the width without moving the visitors' bleachers. And that would add a pretty significant cost to the project. So that was, that was where kind of the permits were already done.
Right. Yeah, I don't have a, again, from my perspective.
I totally understand. I also would love to have.
A six lane track is not a problem.
Eight lanes, but we, we were constrained by this space.
See if any, if the AD had a, an issue with that, but I don't, I don't see it as an issue, other than, and I don't think, you know, I would like to.
The track surface, just real quick, the track surface, we actually are going with a very high quality track surface that has a 15.
Yeah, we went with a high quality one last time and it's bubbling, so.
Yeah, the, the under, the under surface wasn't taken care of. That will be taken care of this time.
I did want to say thank you to the facilities committee members and Bill specifically. We've disagreed on this in the past. I support the turf at this point. You know, I do think the biggest thing I would like to see is, I can remember my sisters all played field hockey, my one sister played at the college level. We went down in like 1990 to watch her play at Villanova, and they had a turf field, and that was relatively a new thing then. And I, I agree with Ms. Sirfoss that watching field hockey on a turf field, I remember, I'd never seen anything like that. And I watched this game and I, I mean, it was like watching a different sport. So I do think the field, I mean, we talk about football and the turf field and everything else, but I think, I can't imagine there's a sport that is more greatly impacted than field hockey. So I, I agree with Dr. Serene's, you know, commentary and concern, and I'm happy to hear Dr. Mayan reiterate that, and I don't like the term equitable or equity, but in this particular term, it actually is used appropriately, which is, I do think there should be equitable use, if not anything possibly favored. Look, you can play football, you can practice football on grass without a problem. And, but playing on this surface as a field hockey is unique. And I, so I certainly hope that this is not seen, just because it happens to be in the stadium, that this is one particular sports playground first and everybody else's second. I really hope that, that, you know, something that happens to be a girl's sport. But I think that there's a lot of reasons to favor them over any other sport, at least in the fall, for the use there. But I'm persuaded of, I think the biggest reason for turf that I had not recognized in my past thoughts about it is just the, the year-round use in bad weather and, and in the bad months. And so I do want to hope that this thing is in use 24/7 and beyond, beyond our high school folks and even our students using it, that the community has an opportunity to experience the, you know, some of our young kids that are in local sports that aren't necessarily in the, our higher high schools that get an opportunity. So I really hope we open this up to, and the track for walking and everything else. I, I continue to hope that we have greater access for the community to this, what appears to be, to be a really great project. So I'm on, on board with that, but I hope we can limit it at six. And I'm not, well, I'd love another one. I don't, to Dr. Serene's point, I do think another one would have to use a bond, and then you are going to begin to impact instruction. And I think, I think for me, this is it, if I even am on the future boards. But for me, I'm happy to vote for this particular project. I think it's well thought out, well funded, and I think it'll benefit the community on the whole. And I'm willing to say to, to old folks in that, in a home that they're getting taxed on, that I think on this one, it's, it's worth it for the, the experience of our kids and what it'll provide the community and our students. I'm, I'm satisfied of that. So I, I plan to support it. But I did want to thank Bill especially. I gave him a long time, over a lot of years, he's advocated for this, he must be quite happy tonight. I tip my hat to him. He's been a, an advocate for this for a very, very long time. So I appreciate your work on this, Bill, over the many years and others. Yeah. And Jeff, I thank you for that. And I, I do want to point out that this project, as the administration first started to look at what the bid was, it was over 6.5. Through the approach that they found through the national contract awards and other means that they took, they lowered it by $500,000. Now, I will also point out, had we done this project years ago, it would have been significantly cheaper. 2010, 2011, Lebanon Valley College put in everything that we're doing and away bleachers for 3.2. Had we done it, and a scoreboard, had we done it even three or four years ago, it would have been under four. So unfortunately, our timing isn't the best, but the administration has done an incredible job of managing the dollars and in particular, the taxpayer dollars to the best of their ability and I think even beyond. And they must be applauded for that. I, I wish Lou was here tonight because he and the staff, along with Dr. Mayan, Michael and others, really did sharpen their pencils, negotiate and find the best possible savings to give a superior grade product to this district. And that needs to be applauded and recognized. You know, and it's, it's something that I, I think, as I heard from the visitor comments, and if you've traveled around this district, if you've traveled around most of Pennsylvania at the high school level, pretty much this is what schools have gone to. And it, the ADs that I've talked to now, as my kids have gone through with the first graduating in 2012, the last graduating in 2020, the ADs that I spoke to at their high school events, the biggest thing that turf benefited, acknowledged by every AD, was practice. And if you are here in the spring in particular, you'll see kids practicing in the gym, okay? They're here also very late at night, and they are student athletes. I would much rather see them doing other things, and if it's studying that they need to do, they can be doing that. But again, they're great managers of their time. And they also produce a fantastic result that we all get to enjoy, watching them play on the field. And they learn a tremendous amount in terms of leadership, perseverance and other characteristics by playing those sports. And I'm sure you would agree with that. And had you not played the sport, you wouldn't have enjoyed the college that you went to and the service that you got to provide because of that, because it's a mandatory requirement, because I think of the leadership. And that is, it can't be undermined or misinformed how much they truly learn through what they invest in and what they enjoy to do. And it's, I've seen it in my own children. It is wonderful what we're doing. And I honestly hope that it doesn't end with just this stadium, because we do need to have another turf field for practices, for equaling out the amount of time and playing time and everything that will be available. And yeah, other sports can practice when the, the grass fields are available for play. And that's our biggest thing. And that's why the ADs love.
available for play. And that's our biggest thing. And that's why the ADs love turf. It also will save us money.
And a concert hall.
Yes, thank you. That's what I was going to say. Can we not forget that?
I wish we were doing that now too.
Because Bill, I want to say, we've never been, no one up here has ever been against moving forward with these projects. I really do commend, well, maybe, Jeff, but, but in spirit-
He exclaims that he was.
You're right. You're right, except for him. But in spirit, but I have to commend not just you guys, the facilities committee, you really did move it forward, which is, which was very helpful. But I think having the right administration team was key, because I don't think we had that in the past, to be, to be frank. But I did want to put another plug in. The reason we had to pull the performing arts center was because of the very high cost. And, you know, obviously, as we dwindle the fund balance, we wouldn't be able to utilize as much of that. And we would clearly have to seek some type of debt with respect to future projects. So I just, while I know we're going to need another field made out of turf, I just want to remind everyone that perhaps we consider the performing arts again before we move to that level, at least something that, that's more of a compromise in between, rather than the higher cost.
Dr. Serene, you and I can agree on that.
Yeah. And I would agree with you too. I was in marching band, I was in jazz band, concert band, you name band, I was in band.
If you go around to the other sites, the other high schools, and you see their performing arts center, it's, it's significant.
Okay. Do we have any other, do we have any other comments or questions from anyone who hasn't spoken yet?
I'm going to say, let's share that aspiration. It's hard work, and it will be time. But to the extent that we can get our financial situation to a point where that's possible, then we can do it. And, and I think we're making steps in that direction. And again, that's a 10 timer for the field. But it's still something that we should, and again, I was, we, we're not ready to do that right now. But let's hope there is a time where we'll be able to do it. But this is progress that we're making tonight. And credit to all, and to all the people who have waited so long for this. So we can do it. We could not right when we want to perhaps, but we can do this.
Anybody have any other questions or comments?
I do, but I'm going to withhold my comments.
All right. Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Wow. Motion carries 9-0. Okay, with that, Mr. Pigeon.
Thank you.
Any updates on human resources?
No, we have nothing going on. So we have nine items for vote tonight. We are hiring, the, the interview teams are still working very hard to get people on board. We do have a certified individual. We have an independent employee, some classified employees. And again, there are some resignations in some other employees on the list. With your permission, we, we should vote on letters A through C, and then E through I, leaving out D, and vote on that separately.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Those revisions and hires and changes are approved. Okay. Can I have a motion for the settlement agreement to approve for employee number 05185? Did I miss a vote?
Yeah, yes.
I'm getting tired. Okay, let's go back.
Lou's not here.
All, all in favor of the-
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. That's approved. Let's go again. The settlement agreement, I need a motion to approve the settlement agreement for employee number 005185. Second by Ms. King. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Okay, that settlement agreement is approved. And with that, we are back to visitor comments, I believe. We did them all. I took them all, with one exception.
They pulled out D.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, back to visitor comments. We have no post visitor comments. Do we have any new business?
I had just a follow up question from a couple weeks ago. A couple parents had asked about green slips and bringing them back this year. I understand that with our busing concerns currently, that this is very much not on a priority list. But I'm just throwing another bit out there for it, because I know how important it was to a lot of the parents to be able to send their kids home on different buses. And actually, maybe with the busing problem we're having, that may actually help some parents. So just-
Let me get an answer to that, because I was supposed to, and I didn't.
And is it, if it's possible, I agree, in current environment stuff, or maybe it would be helpful, I think, nice thing for most folks to add.
Thank you. Any other new business?
The other question I have was, I know sometimes, the beginning, not sometimes, in the beginning of the year, the school year, after, you know, everyone's settled, the first week has gone by, the words provided with like the class counts, just so we kind of have a thumbnail sketch of where we landed after all that planning in the summer. If we could, if we could have that, you know, broken down by, even just by classroom, like Copola, Liberty Bell IS, and what each class count is, that would be really helpful for us kind of in framing where we are now.
I think I actually have that document, which I share.
Okay. And high school, however, that gets sorted out with classes, etc.
Actually, I should have said that. I do have it.
You do have it? Okay.
I think I do. You gave it to me, right?
What's that?
That's like typically the third day enrollment.
Exactly. The third day enrollment number six, exactly.
We have that. Thank you. We have it.
Thank you.
Any other new business? With that, it's 8:25, and we're adjourned.